Now, all right. So I'd like to officially call to order our Curriculum Instruction and Student Life Subcommittee Meeting, Stand- Excuse me, Standing Committee. It is Wednesday, June 10th at 7:02. The meeting is being recorded and we also have BevCam with us streaming the meeting on their YouTube channel as well as Channel 99. And just want to make note that thanks to Governor Baker's modifications to the Open Meeting Law guidelines, we are able to meet virtually and not in person. We will start with the pledge. Ms. Abell, would you like to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
It would be my pleasure. Thank you.
Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. All right. So before we go any further, I just want to give some, a great shout out to our young adults who organized the Black Lives Matter Walk today. It was inspiring and so much more. It was just so well done. The students did a phenomenal job of pulling it all together and seeing that many people in the community come together and show their love, their support for such important cause. It really, it was just moving. So I just want to start off by thanking everyone who helped make that happen. And now we'll go into, do, we need roll call to start, to take attendance?
Yes.
Okay. So I will, Laura, I'll let you do the roll call.
Sure.
Thank you.
Ms. Freddie?
Yes.
Ms. Abell?
Yes.
Mr. Conan?
Uh, yes.
Dr. Flaherty?
Yes.
Ms. Hildreth?
Yes.
Ms. Sudak?
Yes.
Mr. Giagni, is he here? I think he's not here. Um, okay. And Ms. Kirsten is also absent as well.
Mr. Malady will be, is, um-
And Mr. Malady.
Yeah, he is missing tonight. All right. Thank you. Uh, the first order of business is the approval of the meeting minutes from May 6th, 2020. Do I have a motion to approve those minutes?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes from our last meeting.
Thank you. And any, a second?
Second.
Thank you, Dr. Flaherty. Any changes or additions to the minutes? All right. Why don't we take a roll call vote on, on that? I'll turn it over to you, Laura.
All right. Uh, Ms. Freddie?
Yes.
Ms. Abell?
Yes.
Mr. Conan?
Yes.
Dr. Flaherty?
Yes.
Ms. Hildreth?
Yes.
And Ms. Sudak?
Yes.
And then the others are absent. Thank you.
Thank you.
I am here.
Oh, sorry. Um, had to flip through. Who is that?
That's okay. Karen Goodenom-Guire.
Oh, no, Ms. Flaherty.
Hi.
What do you vote?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, great. And the next item on our agenda are updates from our student representatives. Did we have any students with us this evening? I know it was a busy day.
It was a busy day. As I scrolled through, we were expecting Abraham, but I did not see him on the call.
Okay. Well, we'll pass over this and if they do join us at some point before the meeting, they could loop back in and, and give us any updates they may have. Uh, and Dr. Flaherty, I will turn over number four to you, an overview of Senior Week and graduation activities.
All right, great. Thank you. It's been, it's been a busy week and as you said, I just want to echo your earlier thoughts that today was an amazing day and was so proud of our young people for the, the work they did and the powerful sense of community and message and that we were able to send out. So, um, it was, I was very proud to be part of Beverly today and to be part of the rally and walk that happened. So, um, it started almost two weeks ago now with all of our senior activities and I believe Betty Taylor was gonna do an overview and I don't know if she's joined us yet. Betty, are you here?
Yes, I am.
Okay.
Hi. Well, good evening, everybody. Um, let me back up to make sure I've hit everything. The Senior Week activities were maybe a little bit longer than a week in that we started first with our, um, uh, student awards, which is, um, usually is a live ceremony where teachers nominate, give academic awards to students in their classes. What we did do is, uh, send out letters to the parents and the students congratulating them on the award and telling them the award that they received and sending in a certificate. And then we, our teachers each videotaped a message about why they thought this student deserved an award and that's available on bhsonline.org. Uh, that also, we had our baccalaureate, which usually is a nice tradition, but usually we don't get a large group. One of the things we saw in our senior survey is kids wanted to say, get a chance to say goodbye to their teachers. So what we did is we invited both students and teachers to send any message they would like to send out to the senior class. And we were fortunate for Montserrat College of Art offered us a graduate animation student. And what she did was take all our videos, add some animation, did a great roaring panther at the beginning of it and put all those messages together in a 20-minute slide, a video presentation. That too, you can find on bhsonline.org. We also, with the work with, of guidance and Assistant Principal Julie Farrar, managed to announce our scholarship winners. I believe it was over $16,000 in scholarships. Actually, I think it was more than that. I think I'm off on my number. Of students that received scholarships, so all the scholarship recipients are listed again on our school's website. We were fortunate that we have a branch of the institution for savings in the school and they offered to pay for signs for all our seniors. So we had senior portraits on the signs. And, um, on Friday, we had over 65 staff members volunteer to deliver the signs to seniors. They did about three or four, um, people each. Um, and so those were all distributed on that day. And then we finally came to graduation. Oh, wait, no, I forgot one other thing. Then we had the rolling rally, um, where, uh, staff from all over the school district were situated along the sides of the parking lot and the sidewalks. And the kids started at Beverly Middle School and went down, um, New Ball, Cabot and then Herrick and then Sawyer and came through the campus and went round while their teachers wished them well. That was a lot of fun. The teachers enjoyed it and I think the kids enjoyed it and parents enjoyed it too. And of course, we had an escort from the Beverly Police Department and the Fire Department. Then we had graduation. Now, we had to do a hybrid, um, following the border health, um, requirements for, for large gatherings. And so we had, uh, people report in a car with their family members at certain times, starting at nine o'clock. And the students could get out of the car with their family members. We had a stage in front of the school. Their names were called. They came up in their cap and gown and received their diploma. Our PTSO, um, agreed to contract with professional photographers. So every graduate will get a five by seven photo of them on stage, holding their diploma. And then they were escorted off the stage and we had areas further down for photos so families could take their masks off and take family photos of, um, you know, with their child. The, it went really smoothly. The weather was a little gray cloudy and we had two short, very short showers. But at, at four o'clock, we were finished with it and all our students had received their diplomas. So it was a nice day in that it wasn't like our traditional ceremony, but I think what was nice is families could get really close and see their child receive the diploma and they certainly got lots and lots of pictures. So I, I hope it was a good day for everyone.
Thank you. I, I just wanted to say, as, as someone who went and observed and participated in a lot of the events that you described, the comments that I heard from the parents, from the families, were overwhelmingly positive. And, and they just, what I heard the most at, at a couple of the events, in particular, the graduation and the rolling rally, is we should do it this way every year. And, and you are correct in that, you know, it was such a, it was so personal. And I, I was in the front. I, many grandparents and, you know, family members that would be so far away normally got to be right up front and take the pictures. Have, and the photo opportunities, especially at graduation, were amazing. You know, with the school in the backdrop and the Beverly High School sign. I just, I applaud everyone who made that come together. It really, um, you know, I expected it to be wonderful, but I did, I really was surprised at how lovely everything was and how happy all the families were. Good, great job. Thank you.
I appreciate that. And I, I do have to, first of all, give a lot of credit to my administrative team, to Mark Thomas and Julie Farrar, Phil Kader and Dan Keith, because they did all the real organizing and hustling. And then again, our staff stepped up and about 30 staff members stayed for the day and helped us with the moving of the cars and the escorting the people to the picture site. So it was a real team effort.
I, I did, I noticed that and the teachers were, it, I think the most challenging part of the day was not being able to hug the students.
Yeah, there's a lot of this.
I know, I know. And, and the, I think the students themselves, I witnessed just a lot of tears of joy and, um, you know, the teachers were, it, it was touching, but just seeing the interaction so close up. And it was a very personal event, which typically it, it isn't because of the magnitude of it. But just all, you and all your staff, everyone did a phenomenal job. So thank you.
And I, I should say also, the speeches were, um, on video and running that day on BevCam and BevCam is putting a video together with the whole day and they're splicing the kids receiving their diplomas with the videos. And we have some musical performances from the band and the chorus as well. So there'll be a nice, uh, little overall video that'll be, um, sent out to the community soon.
Great. Thank you.
Thanks, Betty. And again, I just want to echo and thank, um, the team and the, by her team, I mean Betty, her administrative team and the teachers. They really did, um, work to try to make this very special for the students, although it was very different than what they're used to in traditional. There was a lot of heart that went into it, but it's also a major logistics, um, competition to get that all put together. And the day just ran so efficiently and, and as did the rolling rally. I think the adults enjoyed the rolling rally just as much as the kids did, if not more. I said it was so wonderful to see people with arms and not just in little boxes. Um, and we were cheering and it was just, it was a real celebration of the whole community. And, and I have a feeling that that one might end up becoming, uh, something that people want as a new tradition. So sometimes good can, can change and, and still be, um, special. So I thank everybody for all of their efforts, um, because it was a monumental task in the middle of trying to still run the end of the school year for all the other students. So now we're on to the closing of the school year for everybody else. So thank you, Betty.
Can I say something to Mrs. Taylor or Dr. Taylor? Uh, I'm a parent of a senior and I also had a senior last year. And, um, we really enjoyed the graduation. Like you said, it was very nice to be able to see so close. Uh, we did enjoy the rally very much. And the other thing that really meant a lot to my senior was the number of teachers that were at the rolling rally and at the graduation. So given that they didn't really, you know, have a chance to see their friends or, or their teachers, it was nice for them to have such a large representation at both of those events. So thank you.
Well, thank you for the feedback. That's good to know.
And there, are there any other com-? I can't see all of the boxes, so Mrs. Freddie, if you can help roll that with the screen up. I can't see everybody. So are there any other comments that?
I don't, and, and I should have said this in the beginning too, that due to the obvious limitations here, if we do not see someone, feel free to speak up and, and announce yourself and do it that way. We can abandon some formalities of hand raising when, in these times. All right. Dr. Flaherty, I will let you take over the, the next item on the agenda as well?
An exciting, a lot of exciting work to talk about here. Um, we're trying to really get, um, all of our curriculum onto a, um, review cycle. And this year, we started with social studies. And the reason for that is that there were changes to the standards that came from the state. And so that was, um, driving, um, the reason to start with, um, social studies. And so what you're gonna see tonight and the reason it's coming forward for us is to share kind of the exciting news with you with sort of resources that we've chosen. But because of a change in the sequencing and when US history happens and in eighth grade, a move to, um, a more civics curriculum as well as a civics and citizenship, um, theme throughout all of middle, uh, elementary and middle school, social studies, um, it's a substantial change. And because of, you have a policy, IGD, for curriculum adoption, um, the, the social studies piece will fall under that, um, policy and because it's a substantial revision to curriculums. And so what I'm gonna do is I want to talk a little bit about, um, the elementary and eighth grade, um, choices that we made. And then we have, uh, I believe our A3 eighth grade, um, social studies teachers were coming and we do have one teacher that will be presenting. And then, um, the high school will present, um, a recommendation that they have for a new high school curriculum. And then we wanted to share with you a new intervention program. This one does not need a vote, but we wanted to share with you a math intervention program that we, um, software that we will be bringing forward or we will be using next year as a pilot, um, at the middle school. So let me start by talking a little bit about, uh, eighth grade. It's called Democracy Lab. We've chosen to go with a, um, company that we use quite frequently and is very well known to educators as, um, quality work in, um, when it comes to the, uh, social studies realm. And Primary Source and Generation Citizen has, have worked together and they were actually awarded, um, a DESI grant per se. They're going to be designing both the middle school and, um, and having some influence on the high school work as well in developing curriculum units for teachers. So it was also good to be, um, involved with them already. We use them quite heavily for some professional development. And so we were aware of their work. And they have designed, um, a great resource for, um, eighth grade and it's called Democracy Lab. And so what I'm gonna do is I will give you just an overview of everything that the package will contain. And then we can present you with, um, a sample unit and walk you through what it would look like. We had originally, um, had on here civil rights, because it does have a unit of civil rights. But, um, in honor of the work that our great young people did today, we actually changed it. And I'm gonna give you an overview of the youth activism and citizenship piece. So the Democracy Lab overview, this will show you all of the pieces that will be contained in the, um, materials that we purchased. And so you can see that they have developed, um, civics curriculum with over 110 lessons. And it has a multi, multicultural and global voice perspective, um, when it comes to that. It's very interactive and inquiry-based. It has the, um, online. It's very, um, technology-based as well. So if we have to stay in a remote for any length of time, this will be a great tool for our teachers. Um, we also liked that it has the civics connection to it, um, right, built into the curriculum. And the strongest asset for me was the fact that it has a very strong professional development component to the overall curriculum. And this is a three-year process. And so the teachers will be given, um, ongoing professional development throughout the, um, the process of those three years. And it also has a large bank of resources and connects teachers to a professional learning community where they can access, um, their peers and, and work with them as well. So that's an overview of, um, what will be contained in it. And then I will show you, um, oops, the nine units of study that will be contained within the Democracy Lab include ancient and global foundations of the US political system, British and the indigenous influences on the US government, youth activism, citizenship and social change, voting in elections, which will be very timely, um, as we are going into national elections this coming year. Uh, the Supreme Court, they'll look at the 14th Amendment and civil rights, civil rights and access to education, a free press and informed community, and uncovering the world of news production. And then ending with Generation Citizen and Action Civics. So these are the nine, oh, nine units. I'm not gonna read this to you because you all have this information, but it just shows you how each unit is, is set up. It will start with an overall description with very clear, um, content expectations of what students will be learning. And then it follows up with what are the essential questions for the unit? So in this unit that we're working on for citizen, uh, for student activism, you can see that there are five essential questions that look at the rights and responsibilities of citizens of the United States. What do these, um, who is left out? Whose rights and responsibilities circumcise? What channels of participation exist for all US residents to participate in civics and political life? How does that constitution allow for protest and change? Which is, um, unique and luckily for the United States, that's a right that we all have. And how young people have participated in political life and fought for change in the past. And then it will give very clear learning objectives. And for this unit, students, this is going to tell you what students will know and be able to do by the end of each of the units. For this unit, students will be able to describe how the constitution and US law defines the rights and responsibilities of its citizens. Will analyze how rights and responsibilities are extended to different groups of people. And we'll look at that historically. It describes the avenues for political participation, um, that are open to citizens and non-citizens, youth and adults. It will portray a good citizen, what it means to be a good citizen of the United States and the world. It will describe and analyze the role of political protest in our democracy. It will, students will be able to list and explain several examples of political protest. And I think that you'll see them work in all of the recent protests that have been happening. And it will describe the goals and tactics of political protest led by young people. And now I would, um, welcome Brian, if he is with us, to be able to talk a little bit. Our eighth grade teachers were able to look at this earlier in the fall. We did apply to be part of a pilot group that were, that would have been able to use it this year. We were not selected. But now that it has come, um, online in order to purchase, um, we, the, the teachers gave us good feedback. We liked what we saw and so we'd like to, to implement this for the first cycle. So Brian, would you like to share the thoughts of your teachers?
Yeah. First of all, thank you. This is tremendous. This is really exciting. I've, personally, I've taken a number of classes through Primary Source, which is the organization that this is going through. Um, I, I'm not familiar with Generation Citizen. I, I don't know about that organization. But Primary Source, I've taken a lot of classes from. And everything they do is top-notch and, um, really engaging. And I've brought a lot of what I've learned from those courses into the classroom. We were excited that we would potentially have the opportunity to do it and we were of course disappointed and we realized that the, the grant wasn't coming through. So to have it actually happen is amazing. So the past year and a half, we've put together, um, you know, our curriculum and we had a really good year, I'd say. It was a weird year, obviously, because of, it's happened. But, but for civics, for our civics teacher, it's actually a pretty good year, if you think about it. Um, but we had a really good year of trying out all these materials, trying out, um, everything new for us. And, and there is definitely times when we, when we thought, wow, that didn't work. We can't wait to try again next year. So to have, um, all this material coming our direction, um, for us to, to go through and work with, that's obviously really exciting. The more stuff we have at our disposal, I feel like the better off we are. I think, um, one of the things that I'm really excited about in terms of Democracy Lab is the opportunity to, for collaboration and feedback with a larger group of civics teachers and social studies teachers. So the PLC that they're offering is really exciting to me. I know from my experience with Primary Source that the, um, quality of conversation that you can have with people in that environment is, is amazing. And the more conscientious and, um, articulate people you have in a room talking about, um, what, what they think are the most important things that our young people take from a civics course, the, the, the better it gets and the more, um, ideas you can have going to your own classroom. So I'm really excited about the PLC aspect of it. Another thing I'm really excited about is, um, Primary Source is an organization that really grounds itself in, um, global education. And I think that it's, um, very important right now that we be teaching civics and American history as something that is situated in the world, not just something that exists in a vacuum of the United States. And so I'm excited to see that they had that question right there. What does it mean to be a good citizen of the United States and the world? Because I think that it's really important that we, um, figure out how to effectively teach US civics as something that is not only, um, US-centric, but something that we can carry forward and create global citizens with. So I know Primary Source is going to have a real interest in, in that angle as well. So, yeah, like I said.
Thank you.
We're pretty pumped about this.
That's awesome. Thank you so much for coming tonight to share your, your enthusiasm, because I know that that will go through to the students as well. Any questions about the eighth grade? Okay. So we have also, um, we're gonna pilot, um, a, some curriculum for grades three through five, also through Primary Source. As I said, that they were given, um, awarded the, um, the planning grant to, to design curriculum for, um, model curriculum for DESI with the standards. And this is a, um, still in development. It will be out and ready for use, um, this September for grades three through five. And then you might be thinking, well, what's gonna happen to grade six and seven? Because they're kind of left out in the middle there. Um, and they will be designing curriculum that will be available for grades six and seven in the following year. And so we will watch that development. But I just want to give you an overview of what, um, the civics curriculum will look like for grades three through five. And one of the things that jumped out with, uh, for me is that this, um, lends very nicely with our project-based learning and, um, that some of the schools have already started to implement projects in these areas. So, um, just briefly, when we look at grade three, that will be focusing on Massachusetts history, which is a big, um, change in the standards. And there is a big, um, component of Massachusetts history throughout, um, many grades of the standards. Uh, but it will also focus on geography and the interactions between native peoples and European settlers. So if you have, I know that, uh, there's, um, a lot of the, the third graders did the Wampanoag. There was a project-based learning, uh, that went on on that. So this will work right in with a lot of that project base that's happening at the elementary level. Grade four will look at North American geography and ancient civilizations. And this looks really at the expansion of the US and movement of peoples and then the five regions, their environments, natural disasters, peoples and cultures. And then grade five will focus on American, uh, early American colonies, the revolution, and early republic, principles of the US government, slavery, civil war and civil rights. So all of this, again, just underscores and can work beautifully with, um, project-based learning for our younger students. You can also see in the, um, I'm not gonna read all of them. You have the materials, but, um, the civics questions that really hone in and provide a raw, really strong foundation, um, for students as they move up, um, into the, uh, upper middle school grades and, uh, the high school. And as we said, this, the teachers have not had an opportunity to work with this, but it, it does align very nicely with the work that, that many of them are already doing. And so we will pilot this. This is only a one-year commitment. And we will ask for their feedback, um, as we go through the year next year to see if, if they find it to be a valuable tool, um, that we would move forward and then budget for. So this is just a pilot year, um, that we'll be doing with them. It's only a one-year commitment. Any questions on grades three through five? Okay, I'm going to turn this over to Betty and her team to talk about TCI Brings Learning Alive, which is what is being recommended for use at the high school.
And let me just give you a quick overview. In 2018, the state revised the standards and frameworks for social studies. And among the changes in standards was also a recommendation in the sequence of courses. The senior class that just graduated would have taken World History there in ninth grade, US One in tenth and US Two in eleventh. Now the recommendation is that students should take US History in nine and ten and junior year should be World History. So this past year's freshman class were the first to begin taking US History. Their sophomore, next year they'll be taking US Two. And it's not until either juniors that they're World History. So the department has been in, working on aligning the standards and taking a look at what they need. At the same time, our contract with our text provider Pearson ran out. We had that for 11 years. And so the department took a look at some other sources and resources they would like. And they've settled on this particular text. I'm going to turn it over. First of all, I want to thank Liz Heffner, who's our department facilitator, Julia Brotherton, who is one of our social studies teacher, including APUS, and Paul Casey, who's one of our freshman academy teachers and teaches also US Two. So they can speak particularly to the text. I believe Paul is going to do the actual presentation. And then if you have any questions, they can handle that. So Paul, if you want to take it away.
Thank you, Mrs. Taylor. And thank you for having me. As Mrs. Taylor said, I think it was in the fall, the administration approached us as a department and asked us if we had any recommendations for new resources. You know, we looked at some more traditional resources, but almost immediately I was an advocate for TCI, which is probably why I'm presenting. But as was Mrs. Brotherton, who's here tonight. Now, just as a brief history, I was introduced to TCI by Mrs. Terminello, who I don't, was on the list, but I don't think she's here tonight. And she was a new teacher at Briscoe Middle School where I was teaching eighth grade, World History. And she had done her student teaching at Danvers High School, which at the time was completely indebted to TCI. So she introduced it to me and it was a fairly new company back then. So to get a lot of their resources, you just had to give them an email address and you got a 30-day free trial to the majority of their, their resources, with the exception of the text. And after that 30 days would run up, we would be really savvy middle school teachers and just put a new email address in. But they've gotten pretty smart to that. So I think they realized there were, you know, not five Paul Casys teaching at Briscoe Middle School. Now, unfortunately, you do get a 30-day free trial that give you one activity to try though. So you don't get quite as much, or excuse me, resources as we got back then. However, just to speak to it briefly, basically what TCI does is like a traditional textbook or text or resource. It will give you all of the, you know, the text that the students can read and Primary Source material and whatnot. However, what it does offer with each unit is, on average, about three hands-on simulation activities where the students collaborate with each other. The teacher becomes more of a facilitator and they really learn through doing. And what I put here was this, the 21st century skills and project-based learning, which I know is a goal of the, of the district. But it was really, we were feeling like we were doing PBL back then with this resource. And I know that one of the, when you, I talked to my colleagues, one of the biggest challenges with PBL, especially for history is, you know, we think of PBL as these six-week units. And how can I, I'm only going to teach one idea in six weeks and I'll never finish my curriculum. Additionally, you know, we have a difficult time maybe finding materials and resources that are proven to have worked with other teachers. So I know a lot of teachers are, you know, weary about trying PBL. What I like to think of TCI is as like a bunch of mini PBLs. Between US One and US Two, there's roughly 60 of these hands-on simulations that last around one to two class periods for us. But really what it is, they are ideally PBLs. The students, again, they problem solve, they collaborate together. And the, and the teacher, you know, with limited resources for the students, maybe just a type of activity, becomes more of a facilitator. Each one of these activities comes with an essential question and a learning objective that at the end, you know, the students have had so much fun actually participating in these simulations and activities. I think they forget they're learning, but they can very easily, you know, answer the essential question and align with the learning objective at the end. What we found when using this at the, at the middle school so many years ago was that as teachers, we were, we were willing to collaborate, not because it was part of a directive or because we were supposed to, but because we wanted to. The students were enjoying the activity so much, they would ask to do them again. We, actually, when we had lunch duty in the middle school, we would hear the students talking about the activity we had just done at lunch, which I know is shocking, but for us it was too. And I actually even had a couple of activities that students at the end of the year, the last week of school, when you're kind of wondering what you're going to do with your, with your students, aside from saying goodbye, to say, hey, can we, can we do that plague activity again that we did three months ago? And it was actually, it was a really rewarding experience, to say the least. So I think that what we'll see with this, with this resource is, especially, you know, for me in the ninth grade, but also moving forward with 10th grade US Two, is teachers kind of working together, doing the same activities and students kind of getting that same information and enjoying themselves. And lastly, a couple of summers ago, I had an opportunity to take a professional development with Dr. Brad Austin at Salem State, who was one of the key writers of the new standards. And one of their, their biggest sticking points with, with us was that we have to begin teaching history from every perspective. Not a new perspective, not one perspective, but every perspective. History for so long has been really taught from, from one perspective, one type of people. And I think now more than ever, as we see today, we need to start stepping in and, and teaching or allowing the students to learn about multiple different perspectives. And what these simulations do is they allow students to kind of engage in other perspectives of history through a variety of, of activities and learn, you know, what it's like to be somebody.
I think we lost you.
I think we lost Paul.
Yeah. Throws up.
Well, maybe he, yeah, maybe he accidentally hit something that's out and is coming back. I don't know if Julia or Liz can sort of, I don't know if he can finish his thought, but if he can speak to the inclusive classroom piece. Oh, sounds like maybe that's.
I can't finish his thought, but I'll fill in until he shows up again. I'll just say that I'm, I'm super excited about the idea of having this curriculum. I've been aware of History Live for a really long time. And unlike Paul, never had a chance actually to teach with it. But I've had my free textbooks in my classroom for a long time and used it kind of on my own in a number of different ways. And what I really like about it, have liked about it, I'm excited to hear what Paul's saying about it because it sounds great. I really like each unit's focus on an essential question, you know, the understanding by design approach to education. So that, and these are like thought-provoking, deep types of questions that students should be asking about history and about our, you know, our country. So it's focused around founding ideals, the most kind of prominent of which are liberty and equality. And there's been that tension in our history between those two for such a long time. And it gets students to think about those things by asking them these questions and then by getting them to engage and, you know, debate in simulations and putting themselves in other people's shoes. I'm just super excited about the idea of having this curriculum and that we will all be using the same thing and be able to have conversations about it together as a department. So thank you so much. I don't know if Paul's back or if there's anything else.
Sorry about that.
Okay, all right.
Could Julia or Paul comment on the strength of how this will help you if we have to stay in a remote type setting? And if that will make it easier for students to be able to access your curriculum?
Paul? Well, I, you know, it's, I think, I believe we're buying the license. I believe we're buying an online, an online license. So it will mean that, you know, it's your standard. It is a textbook, so we can assign that. But then I'm assuming, my 30-day window ran out, so I couldn't look at it again for today. But that there will be some activities that we can have students do remotely because we'll be, it's all online. That's what we're really purchasing. We're not really buying too many hard copy textbooks because we know we won't really be using those.
Yeah, and I think, you know, as we kind of, this was obviously new for all of us with online learning and how to navigate it. I think that as we, as we move forward, you know, if we're all here on Zoom meetings with our students, that I think there's going to be more opportunity for us over the summer to learn how to utilize that better and how to get the students kind of talking to each other instead of us just talking. And many of these activities do, you know, they lend themselves to pairs and groups. And it might be that they are on groups by themselves when we're not there and then they ask us questions. I think there's opportunities, certainly. I think it'll be more challenging, but I think it's doable.
Great. Are there any other questions? If not, this, the two blocks here, both the Democracy Lab, the three to five in the high school, social studies curriculum, we do need a vote to recommend adoption of these materials and curriculum revisions to the full school committee.
Okay, so do you want to make a motion, Dr. Flaherty?
Sure.
A formal motion and then we can.
I would recommend that we ask the school committee to approve the curriculum revisions and the recommended curriculum materials for social studies in grade eight, grades three through five, and for the high school.
Great, and I would second that. And Laura, do you want to do a roll call vote?
I will. Perfect. Ms. Flaherty?
Yes.
Ms. Eva?
Yes.
Mr. Coney?
Yes.
Dr. Flaherty?
Yes.
Ms. Hildreth?
Yes.
Ms. Swire?
Yes.
And Ms. Tuvat?
Yes.
Great, that passes seven to three, or absent, so.
Great. And thank you so much. We're so excited. This is going to be such an exciting and great opportunity for our students at all three levels of school. So that'll be great. I'd like to introduce Kate Tromley now to talk about a math intervention program that we will pilot next year at the middle school.
Thanks, Stott, and thank you for having me here tonight to talk about a new program that we are onboarding. This is a product called Exact Path, which is put out by the Admentum Program Company. And we, just to give a little bit of history, we went out seeking something to help us as a supplemental tool, particularly in grade five, as we started to see some app fatigue, if you will, with ST Math. Although we love our ST Math program, it is being used in the elementary schools. And so the students that are currently sitting in grade five are starting to get a little bit of an app fatigue as we ask them again, as they're transitioning to middle school to, to log on to the same program. So we wanted something that would provide a similar experience with hands-on learning. But we are always kind of thinking about how can we move forward in our math curriculum while also spiraling back to any foundational concepts that maybe a student hadn't mastered yet. So low and behold, after some research and some recommendations, we met with the Exact Path reps. And we were really excited and really taken aback by their presentation and thought that it would be a beautiful fit for our learning model at the middle school. It's so much so that we felt like this could be very beneficial to six through eight as well. So to give a little bit of a background as to what the program will do, it's aimed at closing kind of that achievement gap, but also accelerating learning for all students at all levels. It's adaptive. So when the student signs on for the first time, they take an adaptive assessment that will place them somewhere at their own personalized learning level along the K through 12 curriculum. So there's also an appeal to how discreet that individualized learning can be for a student in middle school that may be still learning well below curriculum level, but then also a student at the opposite end that may need some additional enrichment and opportunities for extension. So once they log on and take their formative assessment and they are placed somewhere in the program, there are kind of two prongs to the program in that what the teachers will have, each student will have their own playlist, if you will, of their own personalized learning pathway. And then there's also a component where teachers can push out the current math lessons that are going on, whole group, small group, and individually within the classroom. So when a student logs on, it's really meant to be kind of a personalized learning pathway for reinforcing whatever concepts they're working on, both in the current curriculum. So if it's a grade five student, it's the grade five lessons that are going on. But if that student may have a area of weakness in a grade three standard, they would then go on their own, whether it be during a learning station or for a homework assignment, and they would be able to practice that third grade skill in their own personalized way. It is a combination along the pathway of a mini lesson where the content is presented to them. They then interact with a hands-on, with different hands-on tools. They take another little formative assessment in order to move on. And if they don't have a mastery in that particular lesson, it bumps them back into kind of a different approach to instruction. It is aligned with the Khan Academy videos, so that there's a lot of extra supplemental materials. And also there are some dashboards that include personalized pathways for extension. So if students are the type of student that logs on and, and takes an assessment and places well beyond grade level, there are some lesson plans and project plans included within the program that can be pushed out to those students for extension and enrichment. All along the way, it gives a beautiful analysis of growth, progress, and individual student data that can be used to support small group instruction. So right within the program, there's a teacher dashboard for data analysis that can allow them to group students in small groups. And it's also, we feel like a good partner as we look ahead to the fall and know that we may be in some sort of hybrid or remote model. Because again, everything is personalized via an app. So really the aim is that they would be doing their practice, their skills practice within the app. And then the teachers would be lifting out areas that are flagged for additional support or additional extension for small group lessons. And they would be driving some of their lessons based on the data that the students are providing. So we are excited to onboard it. The teachers are very excited to, especially, I think, one barrier or dilemma that always comes up for math instruction is that they always feel like they need to move forward through the scope and sequence, but there are still students that need some spiraled review. And this was kind of an aha, oh, this is kind of what we've been looking for to allow us to do that in a very personalized way. So we're excited to onboard it and really looking forward to seeing what it does for our math instruction.
Kate?
Yeah.
That, I think one of the pieces that was really important too is that this is all done seamlessly, right? So you can have two students sitting next to each other, working on very different levels of math.
Yep, every student, exactly, very discreet. So one thing that I think was just a real selling point for us is that the students are able to log into their own platform with their own user ID. And again, they could be working at their entry point on grade level standards while also either working, either below the standard or above the standard, anywhere along the K through 12 continuum. So you could have a student that is a fifth grade student by age and cohort that may need some instruction at an early elementary level, sitting next to a student that is in the grade five age cohort, but is working within high school standards in mathematics. So again, it's a very personalized learning pathway that they have their own path. While the teacher also sets up kind of a classroom path that they can push out different materials at differentiated levels. But again, it can all be done right on the iPads. And so we, the appeal obviously was strong for us as we have been looking for tools like that during our remote learning model. So we're excited to have it.
Great, thank you. This we do not need approval on, but are there any questions? Thanks, Kate.
This is Rachel. Sorry, I don't know if I'm on the screen. So I have some experience with the iExcel program. Is this theoretically, if it pilots well, a replacement to that?
So not, because that's a great question. That was, and, and. So not, because that's a great question. That was, and the teacher's first question, because they were like, what are you doing? No, I don't see it as something, it's definitely not going to replace it for this year. We're looking at both of them as learning tools that provide different types of instruction support. What I do think is that this has the potential, should we use it with Fidelity, to maybe offer more than iXL offers. And so we're, we're really interested in seeing kind of, this year will be, or next school year, we will be using both. And then we will kind of take stock at the end of the year and see which one fit better for us. iXL is really good at kind of that rote practice. This does have a component of that rote practice built in, in addition to the hands-on modules that will allow them to actually, you know, I was in a module, we were, it was building a graph and you could actually drag and drop and build the graph and use the tools. So it was quite engaging and we're looking forward to it being something that will support the foundational conceptual understanding in mathematics and also that rote practice. That's both so important in middle school, so.
It will be interesting to see how the students react to it. I know that the iXL does induce a lot of tears and frustration because it is pretty prescriptive.
It is.
Not as, as flexible. So.
Yeah.
Excited to see how the pilot goes for.
I am too. Thank you, Mrs. Abel. I am too. I am too.
Yeah, we're excited about this and it really, we see this as the extension from ST Math, which is giving you that kind of constructive struggle, but then also meeting students where they're at and being able to move them along that continuum. So we see this as, as more thinking and struggle versus the prescriptive rote of iXL. But it'll be good to be able to compare both and the information that this gives for teachers to under, to be able to analyze how students are understanding is vastly more broad than iXL gives them. Okay, we're moving on to our school improvement plans. As you know, annually, we need to give an update to the school committee on where we are with our school improvement plans. I will, I'll be monitoring, but all of our principals are here to actually do the presentations. And we had quite a lengthy meeting in the last meeting that talked about remote learning. So we will not be including that information again this evening, but we wanted to give you our update on school improvement plans. So as you know, we have our four goals that you've heard us talk about all year, whether we're doing budget or curriculum planning or strategic planning. We always link back to our four goals: engaged learning, rigorous and consistent curriculum, innovative practices, and school management. This year, we all had an unexpected goal plopped into our laps, which was that of remote learning. And we did speak about this and mentioned both synchronous and asynchronous teaching, student engagement, professional development, and the importance of SEL and relationships at our last meeting. So we won't be revisiting that information this evening. But as you know, as we're developing our district improvement plan and we're in the middle of a cycle, and so we, the same goals will be moving forward for next year and then we'll be looking at what we need to do to either change or adapt or go deeper with goals that we've already established. The district makes their goals. That gets pushed out to the schools and the principals then use those goals to develop their school improvement plans. And then our teachers and administrators take those school goals and that's how they make their individual teacher goals for the year. And so we're going to start with Ayers and hear their update on how their school improvement plan goals went this year.
Thanks, Dr. Flaherty. I just want to give a shout out to Megan Hart. She and I collaborated on this as she's moving into the interim position in the fall. So I just want to overview, rather than read everything, our three goals. One was based on inclusive practices, another was based on rigorous learning, and then the third was based on project-based learning where we really wanted to dig in and look at authentic assessments on those because we have been doing them for a while, but we wanted to make sure that we went back and made sure our assessments were in line. So some things I'd like to highlight here, especially under the first goal, was the number of teachers that chose this particular area, inclusive practices, for their professional practice SMART goal. And we had nine out of 33 educators. And then if you go down to the next goal, we had 14 out of 33 choose the rigorous learning task, professional practice goal. And that matters because that follows teachers through the evaluation process and it also helps to move those initiatives forward because people are really super focused on them. In the top goal, I also want to point out, we had a major success this year and major kudos to Nikki Jakes Hughes, our ELL teacher. We brought five of our students who were classified as ELL, English Language Learners, who are now FELs, former English learners. And that is a major, major success for us. So I just wanted to point that out. And also, I know, I know we weren't really going to talk about remote learning, but how can we not? Under that top goal, I wanted to just talk a little bit about the choice boards and the hyper docs with multifaceted links that we afforded our students. And just the, the choice and voice that came out of those learning opportunities have really helped with inclusive practices. The second goal, I already mentioned that we had a number of teachers with that particular area, rigorous learning in their evaluation process. And I just want to point out also that we had eight weeks of Scholars Club and 45 of our fourth graders took part in that early on in the school year and that was super effective for their success as well. And the last one, the last goal about PBL, at this point, really, the only grade level that still needs training is second grade. All of our other grades have been trained to this point. And I also wanted to point out this last point here around remote learning and how we've really had enhanced opportunities for PBL, where every grade level has offered at least one PBL since March 12 and we've had two to three per grade level, really kind of step up and enjoy that with students. That's it for Ayers. Thank you.
Thanks, Debra. And now on to Betty Taylor for the high school.
Thank you. Real quick, a couple of, some summary of accomplishments that we achieved this year despite our interruption. The Beacon Program, which is the transition program for students who are going through hospitalization or have school avoidance issues, was up and running this year. We have a counselor and a paraprofessional working with it and they also connect with our Ladders Program, which is one of our programs. We're really happy with the results and we, we've, we have a good record of students being able to transition back into the classroom with lots of support. We worked really hard this year on a vaping education program, working with the Beverly Hospital and the Be Healthy Beverly Commission. And we had worked with Beverly Hospital, had gotten a grant with an advertising agency and had students design anti-vaping campaigns. We were just in the last stage of that when we got interrupted, but that had been ongoing, including student focus groups and posters in the classroom and in the hallway and beginning to develop, making sure students knew what kind of supports were there. My only hope is vaping has gone down while we've been away, but we were working really hard on that. We continue to take advantage of the PASS Program, which is a program that uses McKean, excuse me, the youth center to, as, as an out-of-school suspension program. Some of the kids, if they get out-of-school suspension, being sitting at home, they go to this program. They have teachers there to help them make sure they're working on their curriculum. And they also have counselors there that sit down with them and talk to them about, you know, what happened and why they, why they got suspension and what other choices they can make. This has gotten into a really good partnership and I think it's worked really well because the student isn't out of school that day, but there are consequences and a chance to reflect on any of their behaviors or actions. We've expanded our co-teaching teams again and developed them further and have given them time to, to plan and some training, further teacher training and project-based learning. I believe it was 12 additional teachers got trained this year. And we did something where, I have several teacher leadership teams that were doing research in different areas, which, some of which I'll speak to in the other slides. But they started in September and have been working hard ever since. We haven't finished our work, but we are in good shape to pick up where we left off. For the goal, the percentage of students in the lowest performing, meeting the MCAS targets, will increase. The, the, we have, part of the, the plan for this, to improve our, our MCAS scores for lowest performing, was a, we began to use the LinkedIn service first with English. We were starting to do assessments so that we have a better sense of where student gaps are and we can target what's going on. Again, that got interrupted to the end of the year, but the English department's all set to get it up and going for the fall and the math department will be doing it as well. Even more with this remote learning experience, it's, it's essential because we do need to assess our students and where their gaps are and where they'll need support and review. I, I had the English, math, and science department work after reviewing their data on MCAS, begin to develop specific lesson plans for review of skills. For example, the English department designed particular writing prompts that use the same sort of question type as on MCAS, which is to take three sources of, three pieces of writing and ask students to write, synthesizing the three in the writing prompt. Math revised their, the study guide sheet that they had and then again, looked at specific problems that they were going to make sure were reviewed before students took the MCAS. And so there were strategies planned. Again, I do know they were doing them in the classroom. The long-term effect of those remains to be seen, but we'll continue that work for the next year. The other one we took a look at is increasing staff skills in social-emotional learning. We were looking for a 10% reduction in discipline referrals. That data is incomplete. I do have to be honest, we weren't hitting the 10%. So that's something we'll need to take a look at again. But we did develop a lot of supports and resources with teachers. The co-teaching teams I spoke about were given professional development time and also that included consultation with Lisa Diker. The teacher leadership teams were, there was one that was working on digital citizenship and digital literacy. And they had a activities and some calendars, excuse me, some activities that we were going to incorporate both into different subject areas in our advisory program. And the community service committee was looking at a sophomore year of service. They had started to do the rough sketch of it and our intent was to have it up and running in September. We probably won't have it up and running for September, but we will continue to work and build on that so that we have an opportunity for students to be actively involved in community service their sophomore year. I already mentioned the transmission program. The Beacon Program was established. And we revised our advisory activity for all grade levels, aligning them with the social-emotional learning competencies. So each grade took on a different competency. Freshman year was getting to know yourself and getting, and by senior year, it was getting to know how you interact with the world and there were activities all based around the SEL competencies. We implemented it this year and will continue with that in the next year. We also took a look at four articulate pathways with transition plans beyond high school. The Career Pathways Teacher Leadership Committee had worked at taking a look at what other schools were doing. Also, looking at the Department of Ed's recommendations for career pathways. We already have a business pathway, but we reviewed how to build that up and they were taking a look at pathways in health science and, I'm sorry, environmental science. At the same time, we started having talks with the Essex Tech and we have established, starting next year, we have 22 students enrolled in the Essex Tech Co-op Program. They'll be taking, these are juniors, they'll be taking shop classes in the afternoon. I'm pretty sure that that's still feasible for next year and we'll just work with Essex Tech if, if there's remote learning issues and things like that. But the students will begin that program. That 22 is a great response. I think it's the biggest. Essex Tech has partnerships with several area schools, but I think we have the largest number and they've been very accommodating and it's really turned into a nice partnership and a good opportunity for students. The, the next step we need to do is to firm up our courses to make sure we have a through line of courses for any of our pathways. As I said, the business department's in pretty good shape with that already and the science is getting there. We're probably going to add a couple of more things, but we should be able to recommend pathways, career pathways in the 21, yeah, 21, 22 school year. What do we need? The, the teacher leadership teams need to continue their work. They, they've made a lot of progress. They lost a couple of months. So we would have been slightly different shape, but we are not that far behind that we can't continue with our overall goals. All that was interrupted, so we'll pick it up from where we are. In particular, the career pathways is something we're definitely going to because we need to be, be clear on our curriculum and our course choices. And social-emotional learning obviously was a concern all along, but we need, we need to make sure we have a lot of strengths in that and a plan with an articulated, articulated, I'm sorry, I'm losing my word choices, you know, sort of an articulation of where we're going and where the supports are and what students get in the classroom because we can certainly use that in remote learning as well as the regular classroom. Next steps. Oh, I thought I had more than one next step. But anyway, yeah, we're going to refine the protocols and norms for remote learning as we work on instructional strategies. I think we all know that there's a possibility that we may have to return to remote learning and we did emergency learning. I think the school did a good job. I think the district did a good job on that. But the feedback from both parents, teachers, and students and staff is sort of the procedures, the protocols, the norms, we're all over the place, admittedly. What we're going to do, and I've already got an active group of teachers meeting with me for a discussion, discussion about that, is what are our norms and regular protocols so that if we go to remote learning again, we're much more streamlined and it's much more consistent for, for the student and the families.
Thanks, Betty. And now we're moving on. Kate Tromley will be doing the middle school.
Hi, thanks, Dot. So we have collected a list of celebrations for both our school improvement goal one, which was an academically focused goal, and then also school improvement goal two, which will come up in a minute. Some of our celebrations is that we had an increase in PBL opportunities overall. We feel as though we have had some opportunities for collaborative and robust cross interdisciplinary unit planning and instruction. In particularly during this remote time, actually, we've had an opportunity for our teachers to spend some time collaborating and providing some really nice cross-curricular opportunities for students. So it was kind of one of the silver linings of, of this pandemic and remote learning model. BMS also on-boarded me, the Director of Innovative Practices, who has been working collaboratively with teachers and teams to develop curriculum, including some of those authentic learning opportunities, as well as developing protocols for looking at student work and data. We are, have built strategically aligned building level and district-wide professional development opportunities. We have kind of taken those four pathways and when we've had building, PD opportunities at the building level, we have really thought about the individual pathways that teachers chose and have also been trying to, in kind of a professionally developmental way, offer lots of different opportunities for students based on where, for teachers rather, based on where they are in their career. So we've had a couple of nice PD days where we've had mini workshops where teachers have been able to kind of choose their own adventure, if you will, for professional development, which has been very successful for us. We also have developed walkthrough checklists in a very transparent way so that we can use those through our administrative walkthroughs for evaluation, but also really set kind of the expectations for teachers as far as the different look-for's that we. as far as the different look for's that we would be looking for in regards to those four professional development pathways. Our school improvement goal number two was really around the kind of newly developed student expectations. As, you know, in the second year, as a new school, really bringing a focus to bringing that new school community together. So that was really the focus of goal two. And on the next slide, our list of some of the highlights and accomplishments from this year. There has been a creation of the Committee for Community. Gosh, that's a tongue twister for this late at night. The Committee for Community, we affectionately call them the C for C, because that's much easier to say. So the C for C gets together bi-weekly to, as a teacher team, to help inform and guide any of our cultural work that we're doing at the building. We also created a behavioral matrix and flow charts and framing language documents that bring more transparency to behavioral expectations. And those are all taught during our Monday, our mantra Mondays. So on Mondays, we bring the students together for an extended homeroom time where they are on team and have designated time for social emotional work. That has included the last bullet, which is start with hello, which is out of Sandy Hook Promise. And along all of these lines, we have been highlighting a cool kid of the week. You see a couple of pictures there on the slide of some of our cool kids. Students that have embodied our mantra, be cool, be brave and BMS. So that is our mantra that was developed along with students and teachers to kind of set the tone of our expectations in our culture of the middle school. We also, we just felt like we needed to include some remote learning celebrations. Our teachers have worked tirelessly to provide some really nice opportunities for our students. We have really maintained a strong focus on the social emotional wellbeing of our middle schoolers. Again, I mentioned before, but we've been afforded the opportunity and kind of to echo what Deb had said, really having some time to pause similarly at the middle school to have some cross-disciplinary instruction and PBL opportunities while the students are learning from home. So that has been a welcomed byproduct of this whole remote learning model. We also have really explored and found great strategies that work for us, both using tech and also instructional practices to really bring some individuality and passion projects to light during this time. And through that have really reinvented some of our Global Apps offerings, which is also pushing us to start to kind of reinvent some of what we're planning on doing in the fall in our Global Apps coursework. So that has been, again, a celebration of the remote learning. We do know that we still have a lot of work left to do. We have been transparent about our partnership with DESI. We have created an instructional leadership team with their leadership along with us. And we have spent this school year really working on a root cause analysis regarding our lowest performing subgroups on math, science, MCAS. Through that, what we really have been able to do is work with our Lincoln team. That, Lincoln is our data warehouse system that we have on-boarded K through 12. And so we have been able to work with the team from Lincoln to make some really nice. And I had shared this at a school committee meeting earlier in the year. I think some of you might remember that we've been able to have some comparative analysis of data, looking at our MCAS scores and our building basis assessments and really thinking about any of our subgroup discrepancies and really being thoughtful about making some action planning, while also making social emotional connections to what we're seeing in the academic performance. So that has, has been a nice partnership and we have really valued the coach that DESI has sent us and we have brought together what will prove to continue to be a really stellar instructional leadership team to help us move the work forward. The next steps for us are really around kind of universally designing our tier one instruction and utilizing best inclusive practices, including our robust co-teaching models. We know that we still have work to do developing our multi-tiered system of supports model with a strong focus on tiered instruction in math and science. The Ed mentum exact path product, we think is going to fit nicely in that MTSS model as we look at personalized learning pathways for our students. We will continue to build upon protocols for data meetings and expanding our analysis of data to include more opportunities for collaboration and also really sitting down to look at student work. We are obviously a very large building and our grade level teams are very big. One thing that has been on the forefront of our minds is calibration of student work and student performance. And knowing this really kind of lends itself to the next bullet that we need to continue to to develop our common assessments for performance and especially rubrics for our more authentic tasks like PBL, including some more common rubrics that can guide us as a building and as academic teams. We know that we will continue to build our assessment and data, including some professional development for teachers. I think that's one area that it's taken a while for the leadership team to get comfortable with our Lincoln data and using it. We have expanded that out to our teacher leadership and now it's ready, we're ready to really make sure that all teachers are comfortable using data for instructional purposes. We know we have a need to continue to track social emotional data so that we can use that. That has been very important during our remote learning model and I think we have been saying to ourselves, wow, we've really taken time and paused during remote learning to make sure that we have the means to track social emotional data in a way that is very useful for us and collaborative. We used to do it, but more siloed in different departments. We've been doing it in more of a collaborative collective way. And that is continuing to prove very powerful for us. And so what started in remote learning cannot now be undone. And so we will continue to do that as we enter the next school year. And then also just really thinking about if we have that multi-tiered system support in academics, we also need to think about a multi-tiered system support for our climate. And that includes plans for social emotional wellness and kind of an expansion of tiered social emotional supports, similar to the Beacon program that Betty has talked about. We are expanding our own program at the middle school to include a tiered social emotional team that will be also onboarding a teacher that will work alongside an adjustment counselor to help support that work. So that is looking forward to next year, whatever it looks like. That's the work we'll be doing.
Thanks, Kate.
Thanks.
And I believe now we're on to Centerville, Julie.
Yes, are we going to roll up to our updated slides? These are the slides from, yes, keep going. So, here we go. Thank you. So first of all, good evening, everyone. I just want to thank everyone for the great sharing tonight. It's been so enjoyable to listen to everyone. You know, at Centerville, we kind of chuckled to ourselves a little bit because as we, when we started this year, we were setting out to have the best year ever. And I think up until being confronted with a global pandemic, things were going quite well for us in terms of pushing growth for all students. So I will just share briefly some of the highlights that aligned to our goals that we set for ourselves at the end of last year. Initially, we addressed the matter of attendance in a, with some tiered interventions. And so we created an incentive program for our entire schools through our house system. And then we really stepped up our monitoring of attendance and outreach with monthly monitoring. And that really put us in the right direction and working more closely with families to have kids show up at school. Secondly, due to our professional development with Lisa Decker, our staff, we really adopted this, we are all co-teachers mindset at Centerville. And that really pushed us forward in aligning our curriculum and planning documents. Beyond our K2 phonics program, it really allowed us to bring more people and more ideas to the table across all of our content areas in really cohesive and targeted ways. And we're really proud of that. That was something that was working so well for us. And finally, I will just add that it will always be the case that each year we seek new updates to our instructional units that allow for authentic project-based learning experiences, which you hear about from all of our leaders across the district. And we will always look to add greater accessibility features through our focus on universal design for learning. You know, this really is the most, you know, exciting part of the job as it's what keeps us energized and motivated from year to year. And especially as we adopt new content standards. So I want to just close by saying thank you to everyone for their support. Beverly's a great district to work in and I feel really encouraged and supported in the work that we do together.
And I would just like to highlight, Julie, that through your three goals, really the thread that is the foundation of your success this year and being recognized by DESI for your high growth. And we are very proud of the work that your teachers and your team accomplished with that.
Thank you.
Gabrielle, we're on to Hannah.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for everyone's time this evening. It has been really excited to, I've been excited to hear all the presentations this evening. And it's wonderful to see how closely aligned we all remain in our goals as a pre-K through 12 district. That's always reinforcing. So just a quick overview of our three goals for this year. It was fantastic this year that all of our teachers chose one of these three goals for either their student learning goal or their professional learning goal. So that really tied together all of our professional development work as well this year and of course, all of our evaluation work as well. So our first objective speaks to the reading growth across all genres of writing. And as we checked in on the mid-year growth, we saw significant growth, particularly in our subgroups from grades one through four. I just want to highlight in particular the grade four win block, which stands for what I need. And our grade four team worked together to create on Fridays dynamic groupings, which meant that students were mixed up across all of our fourth grade classrooms. And there were skills-based groups so that students could have specific instruction by any one of the fourth grade teachers on an area in writing that they needed additional support with or that they were looking for additional challenge beyond the standard on. That I would consider as a pilot going forward for the rest of our grade levels in the upcoming school year. And again, speaks to our UDL focus. Our objective number two this year, we're looking at our growth in math, expanding our use of ST math and puzzle talks, using the math journals across all grades this year. And again, as we did our check-in at the mid-year point, we saw that 82% of all Hannah students had completed at least 70% of the ST math program. Many students had already completed the syllabus at that point and were going on to the challenge level. We also enhanced our use of the box of facts this year. And the mid-year check-in reflected growth for all students in the at-risk category. Finally, PBL, you've heard it many times this evening, across the district, we're all expanding our use of project-based learning. And I will really echo back what my colleagues have said. Not only did we have project-based learning experiences continue through the remote learning period, but we moved into launch cycles at several grade levels so that they were fully underway with our PBLs even in remote learning. And the incredible creativity and time that was spent on the culminating projects was fantastic. And one really, you know, a bonus we couldn't have foreseen was that when the children were giving all of their presentations, sometimes we'd do it in a format where all the kids come together in the gym or the library, which can be sort of overwhelming or distracting. But having that sort of one-to-one presentation when we're in a digital format was really exciting because the kids could really tune in and focus on their peers and ask great questions. So it was really exciting to see that growth continue. I want to congratulate all of our Hannah students on the tremendous work they did during the remote learning period. They're really the heroes in all of this. And my congratulations to our very hardworking faculty. Thank you all for your time this evening.
Thanks, Gabrielle. Now we're on to Lisa Oliver from Cove.
Good evening, everybody. Happy to be here tonight. And what I'm going to talk about tonight is a little bit of alphabet soup because I'm going to talk a little bit about UDL, a little bit about PBL and a little bit about SEL. And you'll see that they kind of all overlap in what I'm about to present for this evening. So you can see that our first objective was around reading. This was an area that we really wanted to focus on, bringing in strategies from UDL and having students, we really focused on our economically disadvantaged kids. And we were trying to close the gap. We used our faculty meetings, our grade level meetings, team planning time to really look at our PBL units and to see how we could bring in the UDL components and refine the work that we had already done. We're fortunate to have everybody at Cove trained in PBL. Was really pleased and proud of my staff over the summer with Lisa Decker. We had about 95% of the staff attend the training and that really showed in the work that they were doing this year. So you can see that as building objective two. This is where they were refining the PBL units, as I said. And like all of my colleagues said, it was carried over into remote learning. But I have to say, I think that that's an area that we need to continue to strive to get better. It was emergency learning. They definitely gave it their all and PBL units were going well. But that would be the area that I would look to improve next year. Innovative practices is our final and that's my SEL. Really proud of Cove School for implementing the house system. And we continued to focus on the castle framework in our grade level meetings and planning times. Fortunate to have a fabulous adjustment counselor that was going into all of our classrooms weekly, if not weekly, every other week and meeting with individual classes to help with the social skills of all students. In closing, I just want to say, I think this might be the last time that I present for Cove, which makes me a little sad because I'm so proud of the staff that I work with. But I'm also really excited to make the transition to the middle school and work with the administrative team over there and they've been welcoming and just fabulous. So thank you.
Lisa, you've been a great leader for Cove. Your school and your team has flourished. I know they're going to miss you desperately, but I know that the middle school is very excited, as are we, to see what you'll bring and in working with that new team. So thank you for all of your hard work there.
And I just want to chime in and say that 13 years I've been at Cove as a parent and now that the last Ferretti is moving out, the timing couldn't be better because we've enjoyed, you've been a phenomenal leader and the whole staff there. I echo what Dr. Flaherty has said. I'm just very happy that you'll be at the middle school. So at least two of my kids, we can continue to work with you and look forward to some more great things.
Thank you. I really appreciate that. Thank you.
And last but never least is our North Beverly.
Thank you for having me tonight. I look forward to sharing a little bit of information about North Beverly. In the past, we have spent some time really looking at our writing and we did a wonderful job improving our writing at North Beverly. So this year we were cycling around to look again at our reading instruction and what that looked like. So building objective one and two kind of all focus around that planning piece in terms of universal design for learning and inclusive practice. And really spending the time, we had a lot of teachers that attended the training with Lisa Decker last summer as well. And really spending the time identifying different components of UDL that we would focus on, specifically looking at how do we look at reading comprehension and scaffold that for our students so that there, every student in our school is able to reach the expectations that they want them, that we want them to reach. And that's both taking in and reading the information and understanding it and also then giving it back and being able to present their knowledge. And so that was a big focus of ours this year and our teachers took that on and we're doing an absolutely amazing job with that. And that kind of carried over into our authentic learning, looking at our PBLs from last year and really kind of taking a lens with that and not kind of moving on yet, but going back and saying, how do we make these better? What does that look like for all of our students? How are they all able to meet the objectives that we want them to be able to reach in a high level of learning, really rigorous learning? And that's one thing I have to say. My teachers at North Beverly are about rigorous learning and they want students to be able to, all of them, be able to achieve at a very high level. So we've spent a lot of time on that this year. They've done an amazing job. And I certainly think it will show this year and next year in just all of our data that will come forth. Also kind of looking forward to this next year, what that will look like. We spent a lot of We spent a lot of time at North Beverly this year in remote learning, looking at that synchronous learning. We found a lot of engagement where a lot of my teachers did quite a bit of small group instruction with their students, finding a lot of benefit from that, from parents really enjoying that, kids getting a lot from that because they were in small groups, learning material and able to interact with the teacher. And we found that very important. And so we focused a lot on that, meeting students where they were, what their needs were, and that was kind of our focus for the year. And finally, social-emotional learning, really just kind of focusing in on what our students need, that real explicit instruction outside of just the classroom. So much like Centerville and Cove, we had the HOUSE system this year, which was, again, students from different grade levels together, working on different topics. So, you know, we would tackle different things like empathy and ideas of empathy and do that where the older kids were working with the younger kids and really kind of modeling what that looked like and sharing ideas, and then being able to support each other in the whole school environment. Those were some of the things we did this year. Proud of my staff. They've done a great job. Great teamwork.
Thanks, Erin, for all your hard work. And as Erin had mentioned, and then we heard in several of the other schools as well, the work of Lisa Diker, I'm really excited that over the remote closure, we were able to provide a professional development opportunity where Dr. Diker came and did a virtual webinar that our entire staff will be watching before the end of school. And so that will allow us to really have some common skills and common knowledge from all of our staff, administrators, teachers, paraprofessionals, pre-K through 12. And I think that we're going to see that impact next year as we start our work together in the fall. Any questions for our principals? We are very lucky to have an amazing group of building leaders, and I thank you all because the work that you've done, not only in remote learning, but every day, is really head and shoulders above a team that I've worked with ever in my career. So I thank you all for your efforts and the work that you do with your individual teams in your buildings. All right, and now it's not moving forward. Sorry about that. Took a minute to get back to the original slide deck. So that is the end of our presentation on school improvement plans. We do not have many handbook changes, but we did have one that was sent out earlier today. So I apologize if people didn't have a chance to look at it. But this is language that was recommended to us from Ms. Spolansky, our pupil personnel and special ed director. And this is new language that should have been updated and needs to be incorporated into handbooks at all levels, and it's around discipline for students with disabilities. And so this is the one piece of language that we do need to have a recommendation to adopt so that it can go to the whole school committee next week and that principals can work on updating the language in their handbooks for the fall.
Dr. Flaherty, do you want to make the motion?
I was just going to do that. I would like to make a motion that we accept the handbook language to change for our handbooks elementary through high school in regards to discipline and students with disabilities.
Okay, and I'll second that. And I think we'll need a roll call vote.
Yeah. Ms. Ferretti?
Yes.
Ms. Abel?
Yes.
Mr. Conan?
Yes.
Dr. Flaherty?
Yes.
Ms. Hildreth?
Yes.
Ms. McGuire? Is she here? Oh, is she?
I think she might have dropped off.
Okay, all right. And Ms. Sudak?
Yes.
Okay, so that passes six, and then four absent.
And then finally, on our agenda, I wanted to give you some preliminary results. We will have all of the results on the website later, oops, next week. And knowing that this was going to be an extremely dense meeting with a lot of great information, we didn't want to, this could be a whole presentation in and of itself with the vast amount of data that we received. But I did want to give you a flavor of the major topic areas that we looked at, and you can see that, you'll be able to see that there's quite a bit of consistency in some of the trends that you see from both our students and from our parents. So the data that I'm going to present to you tonight is preliminary. It does not answer all of the questions. Our data that we accumulated back, but it will give you a good sense of the key areas that we were looking at. This was a survey that was sent to parents and guardians, and teachers filled one out as well. We'll also have that data on the website once we have a chance to finish analyzing it. And it went to students in grades five through twelve. And you'll see that we adapted the key pieces for our little ones as well, thanks to Megan Hart. She helped design that survey that went out to our students in K through four as well. We did have very good results and the responses. When you start to look at surveys, these numbers were very strong. We will also do another survey as we, after we hear the guidance from the commissioner, and as we start to formulate plans for next year, we'll be seeking some further responses back from our parents and help us with our fall planning. So this just gives you a breakdown of the grade levels, and you can see 12th grade and preschool were a little bit lower than everybody else, but the rest of the responses were fairly equally distributed across all of our grade levels from both students and parents. One of the questions, and the first question that we looked into was food sufficiency or food insufficiency, so that we could try to connect with families that may be struggling. And you can see that overwhelmingly ninety-three percent of parents and ninety percent of students agreed or strongly agreed that they had enough food. But we also had the capability for parents to write their name in, or students to write their name in if they were struggling or if they needed or wanted help in connecting with other agencies or areas where they could access food. We did ask about social and emotional health. The overall, it was fairly consistent. Parents answered a little bit higher with agree or strongly agree that their students, that their children appeared happy and healthy during the closure than the students reported. It was sixty-six point five of percent of parents either agreed or strongly agreed, and it was about forty-eight percent of our students in grades five through twelve. I actually think our little guys are the ones that were missing school the most. And you can see that they were only about thirty percent that agreed that learning at home had been good for them. And you can see that we, for them, used smiley faces, and you'll see in a few minutes later on that we used either thumbs up or thumbs down. So it's not exactly transferable to the same amount of choices that the other categories had, but we did want to look at the same broad categories. And you can see that we have a group where they were also allowed to answer their own questions, you know, with words versus just choosing one of the smiley faces. And you'll see that most of those responded that it was somewhere in the middle. So some of it was good, some of it was bad, so they didn't choose either way. And some of them were bored. So they were, they were missing school, and they were missing, especially their friends, which came out in a different question. So then we wanted to ask about the amount of schoolwork that children were receiving at home. And from parents, about seventy-five, seventy-seven percent said it was just about right or almost right, or they wished that they had just a little bit more. But in general, they thought it was about the around amount of work. Twelve point seven percent thought that the students received too much work, and about ten percent didn't think that students received enough work. You'll see that it's fairly consistent with our students as well. So, you know, three-quarters of our parents and students that answered the survey felt like that the work was just about right, although the students have a much bigger category of thinking that they had too much work to do. So that was interesting to look at there as well, about a third of them. And then when we asked our littlest friends, again, they were pretty similar in that the sixty-five percent thought that it was great, and then twenty-one percent thought that it wasn't so good, and then there was a lot of responses that said it was somewhere in the middle. We then wanted to know about access to technology, and this comes with the caveat that this data is skewed by the fact that if they were answering the survey, then they had access to technology, and it may not incorporate our families that were struggling for either hotspots or to have access. And so we need, we need to remember that as we're looking at this because it's very, very strong that, that students had access when they needed it. Many students' parents were at seventy-seven point three percent, students had their own computer, or they shared but really got to use it whenever they needed it. There was very few students that said that they didn't, they weren't able to get to a device in their home when they wanted it, from the parent's perspective. And this was even stronger when we looked at students. And we need to remember that our seventh and eighth graders all have iPads, and our high school students have their laptops. And then we were able to distribute devices to our fifth and sixth graders. So this shows that our students in the five through twelve group really did have their own devices and access whenever they needed it to do their work or to get onto their classrooms. And then the same, that was very consistent when we looked at our students that answered the survey in grades K through four, over ninety-five percent of them said that they had no problem getting a device when they needed to do their work. As you know, social-emotional learning, and especially in the times that we were in, the anxiety and just the change of being remote, we wanted to make sure that students were feeling cared for. And so one of the questions that we did ask was from both parents and then students, that teachers have demonstrated a high level of caring compassion for students during the closure. And you can see that this was extremely high from both of our groups, and highest from parents, eighty-five percent of our parents agreed or strongly agreed that they had received caring and compassion from the adults, and only five percent disagreed or strongly disagreed. And then with the students, again, it was over seventy-five percent that agreed or strongly agreed, and six point five percent that did not agree. So very consistent trends there. And we are very grateful to our educators because this really was the leading before, especially in the beginning, before anybody focused on the academics. We wanted to make sure that our students were safe, that they were fed, and that they were feeling cared for. Then we asked about interactions with teachers. This was probably one of the areas that were, that struggled a little bit in the beginning because there were so many changes. The first two weeks, it was just about engagement, and then it went to more asynchronous where people were leaving videos that students could watch. And then two weeks later, it transitioned the last time, and that's when we went into synchronous new learning and seeing teachers. So this was the area that changed the most throughout the survey, but still very positive responses from our parents. About fifty-six percent said that they thought it was about the right amount of interactions with teachers, and that jumped up when we looked at students to almost seventy-five percent. With parents, there was a split, about forty percent wished they had been a little bit more interaction, and that dropped dramatically because it was so much higher for students. That was only at eleven point six percent. The kids were actually higher when they thought they had too much interactions with teachers, which was at eight point six. And five percent had said, reported that they had not had any interactions with teachers at that point. Remember, this was done, this survey was done in the beginning to middle of May. And when we asked our K through four students, ninety-two percent of them gave it a thumbs up that they got to see their teachers and peers online during the week, and that, that was what was making them very happy. And it was only less than one percent that said that it wasn't enough time for them. And then the last area that we're going to focus on tonight was looking at feedback from teachers, so how were students and parents feeling about the amount of feedback teachers were providing for their students? And about sixty-eight percent of our parents said it was just about right, about a quarter would have liked more, and around six percent said that they hadn't received feedback. So again, very positive trends there. And it was almost mirrored by our students, which was a little bit higher, at seventy-two percent that had said that they had received about the right amount of feedback, and twenty percent that wished that they had received a little bit more, and around five percent that had said that they had not received feedback yet. And when we get those results, that was information that we shared with principals, and so that we were able to follow up. These were anonymous, so we didn't know exactly who the teachers may have been, but it was a general statement to making sure that, that we were changing with the times. So in the beginning, there wasn't any interactions the first couple of weeks, and it could have been perceptions that came from that time, and that did change over time. So I think that we would expect to see even higher numbers, although these are very positive. We would expect to see even higher numbers in a follow-up survey. Any questions about the preliminary results? And Mrs. Ferretti, I think that's all I've got for you tonight.
I know, thank you. That was, this is a wonderful meeting, and I can't believe it's our last of
Of the year.
This year, yes. We won't be meeting again until the fall. I don't know, we could still plan to meet and just talk about how our summer's going.
I just want to take a moment to thank all of our members, both our school committee and our community members and our students. I wish our students were here so we could have thanked them for some of their good insight and, and thought-provoking questions that they, they made us consider throughout the year. And we know that you could all be doing something else on the first Wednesday night of the month, and I'm very grateful that you come and spend your evening with us so that you can help to shape the work in the future of the Beverly Public Schools.
Yes, thank, thank you, Dr. Flaherty. This is, I would say, one of my favorite meetings as a school committee person. I get to hear of all the wonderful things that are happening in each of our schools, and it just reinforces how I feel that, you know, we just have the best leaders. We have the best people in all our schools, and I'm just so proud to, to say Beverly is where I'm at and all my kids are at. So thank you. If there's no other questions, then I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
All right.
I'll second.
Thank you, Mrs. Abel. All right, so we will take a roll call vote.
Okay, Ms. Ferretti?
Yes.
Ms. Abel?
Yes.
Mr. Conan?
Yes.
Dr. Flaherty?
Yes.
Ms. Hildreth?
Yes.
And Ms. McGuire? And Ms. Sudak?
Yes.
All right, the motion passes.
All right, so we are adjourned at eight fifty-one. Thank you all very much, and enjoy your summer.
Have a wonderful summer, and we'll see you in October.
Thanks.
Good night, everybody.